Welcome everyone to the 5 o'clock meeting of the Palmdale City Council.
City Clerk, could I please have a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt.
Here.
Council Members Bishop.
Here.
Loa.
Here.
Osen.
Here.
And Alakon. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Eric, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd love to. Everybody please rise. Place your right hand over your heart and then following the pledge we'll do a moment of silence. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair, may I have the floor to say something?
You absolutely may.
Okay. Before we get started tonight, I want to take a moment to pause and remind us what this space is meant to be. A place for public service, professionalism, and respect. In recent meetings, the tone here has drifted away from the level of respect and professionalism that our city deserves. We all share responsibility for maintaining an environment that reflects the values of the city of Palmdale. At our last meeting, some remarks were made that were unprofessional and directed towards fellow elected officials and others who serve in our community. That's not who we are and that's not how we represent the city of Palmdale. I want to express regret to anyone who felt disrespected. Everyone in this chamber should be treated with dignity and respect. Over time, some relationships have changed and that may have played a part in how things unfolded. Even so, disagreement is part of democracy and it must be done with civility. So tonight, let's reset, let's move forward together, showing professionalism, focus, and unity that our community expects and deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin Bishop. Could we also, Clerk, have the Public Comment Code of Conduct read?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In lieu of what happened at our last meeting, I just want to say that as the presiding officer of this meeting, I would like to remind everyone that the city follows the Rosenberg Rules of Order and this meeting will be conducted in accordance with those rules. If a disruption occurs, the first thing that will happen is I will issue a warning and request that the disturbance cease. I will recess the meeting after 10 minutes after the second warning. After a 10-minute break, we'll come back in and we'll resume the meeting. If a third disruption occurs in accordance with the Brown Act, I will either clear the entire room or have the individuals who are disrupting the meeting removed. This is going to be a very strict meeting. It's not going to be like the ones in the past. So please adhere to the rules. And now for your entertainment, we're going to have a cute critter video. All right, thank you. So on behalf of the entire city council, we're going to be pulling item number 5.4 to be heard at this time. If I could please get a motion and a second?
All motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we do a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to item 5.4. Do we have a staff presentation or conversation for this? Oh, here he comes. Uh-oh.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member. Item 5.4 is for your consideration to adopt a resolution number CC 2025-057 to approve a dual naming of Avenue Q as Deputy Klinkenbumer Avenue from Sierra Highway to Fortieth Street East and authorize staff to prepare notification and install new street signage. Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer is an eight-year veteran of LA County Sheriff's Department, was killed in the line of duty near the section of Avenue Q and also marks the northern boundary of his assigned patrol. The proposed naming serves to honor his service and sacrifice to the Palmdale community. That completes my presentation, thank you.
Now if I could have some strong men come down and help me lift this sign, I'd certainly appreciate it. It's a little bigger than I thought. And then if we can have the council come down and we'll take pictures with the sign, okay? As soon as they bring it down, let them do that first. I decided I couldn't carry that by myself.
Got him.
Would you like the whole shot right now?
I will. Okay. You gotta get out. There we go. And then do we have a free mic?
Sure.
Madam Clerk, do you have the extra mic? Everybody get close, get friendly. Oh, thank you, the mic's behind you. Hang on, there's more. Is it good? You got it? Okay. So Captain, can I have you hold in there? I'm sorry. Hello? Can you guys hear me? Oh, good. I would like to acknowledge that Captain Barden is here from Palmdale Station and Chief Copper... Rude, I'm so sorry. I would like to offer you both the ability to speak.
First and foremost, thank you, everyone in the city of Palmdale, the community members of the city of Palmdale. You came out valiantly for us when we needed you the most, when we lost Ryan that day. There's days and weeks and months of support that we saw and even up to this point and beyond. I'd be remiss not to say that it's an honor to be with Klinkenbumer's family, especially his parents. Kim, you've been a champion for your son every day of the week and twice on Sunday and you continue to be that. You know, we're here for you every day of the week. We put our arms around you, you are a part of our family and that'll never change. This is just one more piece of honoring Ryan and making sure his legacy remains in the city of Palmdale where he gave his life up, the ultimate sacrifice to protect this community. And unfortunately, because of the job he had and the uniform he wore, somebody like that person did a cowardice act and took his life for nothing. I think this is a rallying call for all of us to realize, you know, we're in it together. This is a community. It shouldn't be divisive like this. It shouldn't be anything like this. Ryan should still be here today and I hope everyone that drives down that street remembers that. Remembers the sacrifice, remembers all the stuff these deputies do every day of the week to make you safe. Are we perfect? No, but no one in this room is. Okay? And we gotta learn from our mistakes sometimes too, but again, we are all in this together to do the right thing. Today is here today to honor Ryan and to sit here and be here for Kim and the rest of the family as well, and Mike at home. So we love you, Kim, and I'm happy you're here for us and we're here for you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. It's a privilege for me to be here. Many of the staff for the Sheriff's Department don't even know me yet. So I'm newly assigned to the division and proud to be here, really. I'm sorry it's under these circumstances. It's been devastating really for the department. No more so than Ryan's family and Palmdale Station. I'm very well aware of that. So thank you to the council for supporting, really, the station. It's a huge impact for me to see as an incoming chief, the, really, the support that the city has for, you know, our personnel and our staff. So thank you so much for that. And, you know, it's our commitment to you as well that, you know, we'll do our part in that mutual commitment. So thank you so much and it's really an honor for me to be here. And to our personnel, I'm looking forward to meeting with you and working with you. It's really going to be my honor towards somewhat, not the end of my career, but towards the end. So thank you so much to the council, thank you.
Chief, I just want to let you know, I know you're new, but the city of Palmdale, the community of Palmdale, the residents of Palmdale, love the Palmdale sheriffs. We are united in our effort, in our fight. The residents appreciate everything that they do. Their patrolling, their community service, their community engagement. It's all recognized by our residents. And as a city council person, you would think that we'd hear negative comments. We never have. People don't complain about the Sheriff's Department to us. They love the Sheriff's Department, they love what you guys do. And so I just want to thank you for all that you're doing. Every one of you is an ambassador for our city. You represent all that's good with Palmdale and it's truly appreciated. Thank you.
Let's just get the deputy.
Yep. Come on deputies, come on up, let's get a big group deputy photo. It's getting heavy on my arms.
File in here too.
I'm going to step out.
Maybe if we step back up there and they can all... Let's get these chairs out of the way.
Oh, okay.
Come on up.
Okay. Let me just push this out of the way so you guys can stand. So you can be seen better. Come on. Everybody be friendly. We'll be friendly. I'm going to see you. If you step forward, you'll be better pictured.
Are we all in? All right, are some of them ready? All right. Look right here for me. And three, two, one. And hold this smile, three, two, one. Perfect, thank you.
Oh, there's more.
He will send it to you.
Oh, she didn't... Oh, I'm sorry. Is Felix here? Is he? Okay. So Felix, before we get started, can I have you introduce the group because I can't pronounce the name, I'm so sorry. Say the name one more time.
Raices de mi tierra.
Okay, better you say it than I do. Before they dance, Felix, don't leave because before they dance, I'm giving you a proclamation, okay? Everybody just relax for just a minute. All right, Felix, come on up. This is for Hispanic Heritage Month and this is a proclamation that we're presenting to you. I will read it for you. Says, "Whereas September 15th through October 15th is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, which celebrates the achievements of Hispanic Americans in the arts, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, the military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors. And whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988 to honor the contributions of Americans who traced their roots to Spain, Mexico, the countries of Central and South America and the Caribbean. And whereas Hispanic Americans have played a significant role in our national heritage and continue to embody the pioneering spirit of America today, many generations of Hispanic Americans have consistently helped our country thrive. And whereas 60 million Hispanic Americans reside in the United States and 15 million of them live right here in California, comprising the largest single ethnic group in both our state and the nation. The city of Palmdale's population includes more than 104 Hispanic, excuse me, 104,000 Hispanics, American, Hispanic Americans, generations of whom have helped shape our society, our economy, our culture, and values. And whereas Hispanics and Latino Americans represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of the city of Palmdale, we now honor the invaluable ways that they contribute to our great city. Now therefore, I, Laura Bettencourt, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Palmdale, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through August 15th, excuse me, October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Palmdale." There you go. Would you like to speak? He's coming up on there.
Okay. Para nosotros como organización pro inmigrante latina es muy importante que la ciudad de Palmdale está reconociendo el aporte, la mano de obra, la cultura de la comunidad hispana. Gracias y estamos aquí para seguir trabajando en colaboración con ustedes.
Right here. Ready, three, two, one.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, all right.
Hey! 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 Hey!
This is the one time you can clap.
Thank you for that beautiful presentation. Sorry, I stole your mic. There you go. You got it. All right, so now we're moving on to item number 4.2, Communications Division update.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council members. I'm Stella Devine Knight, Communications Manager. Tonight, I'm excited to share with you a brief overview of the initiatives and projects that we've been working on over the past year. From community engagement efforts to outreach and public information campaigns, we've been dedicated to keeping our residents informed and connected. Thank you for your time. We're going to show a video now, and I'll be here for questions or feedback after the presentation.
That was amazing. Very good. Lot of work. Well done.
Any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Just keep on going.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think Austin had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, I just wanted to say great job to our entire communications team. I know my personal experience in local government is, it's always been very difficult to engage the public and to draw people in and show them what they're, what we're doing and all the positive things that are going on. So, I want to thank the staff in this council for, over the years, continuing to encourage the communications department to invest in social media and promoting what we're doing online, because that's, that's one of the best ways we're going to get the message out to the public, what we're doing. So, all the numbers are trending in the right direction, and we just need more people to know how awesome Palmdale is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so now we're going to be moving on to consent calendar. City Manager, are there any items you would like to pull?
No, there's no items to pull.
Okay. How about our council? Any items you'd like to pull?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Let's call for the vote.
Put a motion in.
There we go. Did they get the second?
Thank you. Call for the question.
Oh, no, we can get to that. Okay, so now, we're going to call for public comments on consent calendar items only. If you filled out a speaker card, please stand in line as your name is called.
There are no speaker cards on this section.
On consent calendar, nobody?
Uh.
Okay. I'm shocked. All right, then I will go ahead and close public comments. So, could I get a motion? And, well, we don't have to do that one, because we didn't pull anything. Hang on. I guess we'll move on to item number six for public hearing. So, now is the time for public participation. Each public hearing will have its own public testimony. So, we will be starting with item 6.1. I will open the public hearing for 6.1. Do we have any speaker cards?
We have no speaker cards on this section, on 6.1.
Then we will close public comments on 6.1. Do we need to read the title of the ordinance and the resolution?
Yes. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, California, adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Code, including Appendix P, residential code, including Appendix AZ, existing building code, green building standards code, energy code, plumbing code, mechanical code, electrical code, wildland urban interface code, Title 32 Los Angeles County Fire Code, and proposed amendments, finding the ordinance exempt from CEQA. Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, California, making its express findings as required by Section 1795-8.7 of the Health and Safety Code of the State of California relating to the adoption of the 2025 California Building Code and proposed local amendments, and finding it is not a project per CEQA.
Thank you very much. Could I get a motion in a second to introduce ordinance number 1661?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Please.
Motion carries.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. My name is Brian George. I'm the building official for the City of Palmdale. And tonight, as we read the ordinance, it reflects the Building Standards Commission, every three years adopts a new code based on the model codes, nationwide model codes. It's adopted and given to the jurisdictions for 180 days by which to make amendments. These amendments can be more stringent, they cannot reduce the code requirements, and they must reflect three criteria, one of which is geological, topographical, and climatic. Traditionally, City of Palmdale increases the snow load to 20 pounds per square foot, based upon the climatic condition in the amendment. And that's what we've done here, along with, and I would like to point out, that we haven't deviated from any of our previous code amendments as far as the code cycle itself, but we have taken a good look at our Palmdale Municipal Code, the administrative provisions. Administrative provisions are not required to be adopted. If you want to adopt them, you can. We have our own administrative provisions within the City of Palmdale. And as part of an ongoing effort to increase efficiency and customer service and cut the red tape, as they say, we've gone ahead and taken a look at our policies and our procedures, one of which is our plan application and our expiration dates. We've gone ahead and we've increased it from the one year, and we've allowed multiple extensions at no extra cost to developers or applicants. So, this is something that we've undertaken in an effort to be more efficient, and we'll continue to take a look at all of our policies and procedures. I'm available for questions, as well as our code consultant, if you should have me.
Okay. Do we have any public testimony on this item?
No, Mayor Pro Tem and Council.
Hang on, there might be one there, I'm not sure. 6.1?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up for 6.1. Don't go too far, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and city staff. I'm a little nervous, sorry. My name is Ramila, and I'm a resident of Palmdale. I'm here tonight to speak about serious safety and maintenance issues at Menzina Heights Park and along Fifth Street West, which runs beside it. First, the park facilities are in very poor conditions. The water fountains are rusted and unsanitary, and the restrooms are dark, outdated, and feel unsafe. These areas urgently need renovations, so families can feel comfortable and safe bringing their children here. Second, the fencing around the large green area prevents families and dog owners from using the open space responsibly. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, so...
That's okay, carry on.
Sorry about that. Instead of fencing it off, I asked the city to add lighting and security cameras that would discourage unsafe behavior and make the park safer for everyone, especially in the evening hours. Third, the barbecue grills near the picnic tables are heavily corroded and unsafe to use. I recommend removing them and replacing that section with outdoor exercise equipment. Similar to what other California parks have, these would give residents, including seniors, a free and healthy way to stay active. Fourth, the park, the playground surface made of sharp wood chips is unsafe for children. I ask that it would be replaced with a safer material, and that the city consider modernizing the playground design to make it more inclusive and engaging. A small splash pot would also be a wonderful addition during Palmdale's hot summers. Finally, I want to address traffic safety on Fifth Street West. Cars regularly...
This is about building codes, ma'am.
Sorry. I just saw the safety part, that's why I said that. Sorry about that.
Anything about building codes? You want to carry on? You've got 23 minutes left.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Seconds, seconds. I'm sorry, seconds.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other speakers on 6.1 regarding building codes?
No further speaker cards.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public testimony. And I guess you have to read the resolution? Or did we do that already?
No, I've already done that on 6.1. This is 6.1. So, we have a first in there, just to, just, just to let you know, we have a first already. So, if somebody wants to put in a second...
Okay. So, we have a, anybody want a second?
Or council discussion.
I'll second.
Okay. We have first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Go ahead and put in it.
I'm gonna have any discussion at all?
Well, it says right here. Close public comment, call for the ordinance, council discussion. We're getting to it.
Okay.
All right, let's do, go ahead.
Okay, may I?
Your mic needs to go in.
Someone, I have a couple of questions. Mr. George. So, I see that, and you referred to, I guess, streamlining the previous policy, which sounded like there wasn't much of a policy in terms of extensions. And now, it's going to be not to exceed two extensions at 12 months apiece.
Correct.
So, I think that one of the problems that, this may be a little bit off topic, because I think that previously, we were giving extensions on subdivisions, you know, quite, quite repeatedly, because of the economy and it's changing. That's not, that's not an issue as far as extensions or limiting the number of extensions for, for building permits. Am I right in thinking that?
Correct. Subdivisions and developers themselves, not to get off topic, but with AB 130 coming in, that's going to greatly extend their ability to reuse their plans. But no, previously, we had, we had 12 months. If a permit was not issued, based on that application, within 12 months, it expired. The applicant would then reapply, incur new fees, and go through the process again. They could, prior to expiration, through a letter to the building official, request an extension and pay an extension fee. I never denied an extension. I was happy to, to go ahead and give extensions. We, a year didn't seem like enough, okay? We, as, as City of Palmdale, we don't have a fire department, and we don't have a health department. So, any applicant that comes to us, if they're required to go through fire department for building checks, egress, sprinklers, et cetera, they have to go through LA County Fire. Total separate application process, software system, et cetera. Same thing with the health department. Food services, they have to go through LA County Health. These are processes and timelines that we don't have control over. So, you can see how they might be done with the City of Palmdale, and yet incur a lengthy wait with these other agencies. Okay? That was leading to people unwittingly, unknowingly, having their applications expire. So, in an effort to obviously be helpful to them, extend time, and not have staff continuously redoing paperwork, we went ahead and we extended it. You still have the one year. If you apply to the building official for an extension, we will grant that extension with no cost, okay? And again, within the next year, if you apply, we'll grant another extension. Now, the reason for the 12-month markers is so that there is some sort of dialogue communication between the applicant at these marker points, where they're informed, here's the time you have left. So, we don't get to a lengthy application time where there was no communication at these marker points. So, every, every 12 months, there will be dialogue between the applicant and the building department, saying, here's an extension, be aware, here's how many extensions you have left.
So, they have, it's a total of 36 months, but...
Maximum.
At times, because of the length of time it takes to go through the system for Los Angeles County, for instance, and through no fault of a developer or an applicant, they could run out of time, right? I mean, there's, I mean, it's a situation where, well, I guess my question is this. If they get to the last extension and they're running out of time, can they, would they then have to reapply for the entire process over again? Or is it possible for them to appeal for, for a further extension?
As this is written, at the end of 36 months, time's up, you reapply. 36 months is a quite generous length of time to, to get through these, these processes. I would be shocked if it took 36 months.
So, it would be very rare. Any experience?
It would be very rare, yes.
And my other question is, I know there's going to be fiscal impact, a reduction in revenue may occur due to fewer applications and plan check fees. What's the mechanism that, that would be causing that?
So, right now, if you do the, there's, there's two, there's two portions to that. The extension fees that are charged with the extension are 25% of the, the plan check fee, as, as previously, or actually currently, written in the Palmdale Municipal Code. We charge these fees, and we have to deal with new applications frequently, and so that revenue will no longer be coming in, because we, there wouldn't pass those charges on to the applicants and the developers, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for doing this, because a, as a homeowner, I know sometimes, it's not just the permits and the fire department, sometimes it's just hard to get a construction company out there to get things done within a certain amount of time. So, on behalf of the residents that are remodeling or trying to upgrade their home, this is a huge benefit for them, and, and it will help them financially and take off some of the stress that the whole process is. So, thank you for doing that.
And I would like to reiterate that that's part of what we're doing, going through our, our policies, expirations, updating our, our webpage, creating videos, not, you know, people tend to learn better with videos. I am a visual learner myself, so we're, we're doing all of this to make it easier. We're going through all of the old policies and asking why. Does it still make sense?
Thank you.
What was this for? Is it something we still need? So, with the help of management and council, we'll do what we can to get out of the way.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you as well for revising. I know since I've been on council, snow load and, and the weight per square, square foot has always been an issue, but I know we have to update this every few years. This is Title 24 through the state of California, so there are some regulations in here that are a little unfriendly, I guess you could say. Does this include the, the electrification of, of everything moving forward? So, like, no more, no more gas appliances moving forward, once this takes effect for, for home builders? If they were to build a new, a new home, I, I read that it, it makes them have a solar system, a battery backup, heat pumps, electric stove.
It's definitely, it's definitely to their benefit, yes. So, solar, solar is required. It's been required six, 2016 code cycle. Batteries are not required, but again, with the tier ratings and the adjustments that SC has made, I believe, if I don't get this wrong, it was April 15th of '22, the tier system changed, and you no longer got paid as much for what you produced, which then took the ROI, the return on investment to your solar system, kind of to, to flatline. So, batteries became not mandatory, but wise. So, they just integrate it as part of the system, because it, it's what ends up getting you your return. You can store that power, and then you can use it during peak hours, when you, when you normally wouldn't, you wouldn't get as much for your, for your power. So, batteries not necessarily required, I don't know why you wouldn't do it. Close public comment. Call for the ordinance. Council discussion. We're getting to it.
Okay.
All right, let's do, go ahead.
Okay, may I, may I?
Remake these going.
Someone, uh, I have a couple of questions. Mr. George. So, um, I see that, and you, you referred to, uh, I guess, streamlining the, um, previous policy, which sounded like there wasn't much of a policy in terms of extensions. And now it's going to be, um, not to exceed two extensions, uh, at 12 months apiece.
Correct.
So, I think that one of the problems that, uh, this may be a little bit off topic, because I think that, uh, previously we were giving, uh, extensions on subdivisions, you know, quite, quite repeatedly, um, because of the economy and it's changing. Uh, that's not, that's not an issue as far as extensions or limiting the number of extensions for, for building permits. Am I right in thinking that?
Correct. Subdivisions and, and developers themselves, uh, not to get off topic, but with AB 130 coming in, that's going to, to greatly extend their ability to reuse their plans.
Okay.
But no, previously we had, we had 12 months. If a permit was not issued, uh, based on that application, within 12 months it expired. The applicant would then reapply, incur new fees, and go through the process again. They could, prior to expiration, through a letter to the building official, request an extension and pay an extension fee. Uh, I, I never denied an extension. Uh, I was happy to, to go ahead and get, give extensions. We, a year didn't seem like enough. Okay? We, as, as, as City of Palmdale, we don't have a, a fire department and a, and we don't have a health department. So any applicant that comes to us, if they're required to go through fire department for building checks, egress, sprinklers, et cetera, they have to go through LA County Fire. Total separate application process, software system, et cetera. Same thing with the health department. Food services, they have to go through LA County Health. These are processes and timelines that we don't have control over. So you can see how they might be done with the City of Palmdale and yet incur a lengthy wait with these other agencies.
Right.
Okay? That was leading to people unwittingly, unknowingly having their applications expire. So, in an effort to obviously be helpful to them, extend time, and not have staff continuously redoing paperwork, we went ahead and we extended it. Uh, you still have the one year. If you apply to the building official for an extension, we will grant that extension with no cost. Okay? And again, within the next year, if you apply, we'll grant another extension. Now, the reason for the 12-month markers is so that there is some sort of dialogue communication between the applicant at these marker points where they're informed, here's the time you have left. So we don't get to a lengthy application time where there was no communication at these marker points. So every one, every 12 months, there will be dialogue between the applicant and the building department saying, here's an extension, be aware, here's how many extensions you have left.
So they have, it's a total of 36 months, but-
Maximum.
At times, um, because of the length of time it takes to go through the, uh, system for Los Angeles County, for instance, um, and through no fault of a, of a developer or an applicant, uh, they could run out of time, right? I mean, there's, I mean, it's a, this situation where, well, I guess my question is this. If they get to the last extension and they're running out of time, can they, would they then have to reapply for the entire process over again? Or is it possible for them to appeal for a, for a, for their extension?
A, as this is written, at the end of 36 months, time's up, you reapply. 36 months is a quite generous, uh, length of time to, to get through these, these processes. I would be shocked if it took 36 months.
So it would be very rare.
It would be, it would be very rare, yes.
And my other question is, uh, I know there's going to be, uh, fiscal impact, uh, a reduction in revenue may occur due to fewer applications and plan check fees. What's the mechanism that, that's, that would be causing that?
So, right now, if you do the, there's, there's two, there's two portions to that. The extension fees that are charged with the extension are 25% of the, the plan check fee, as, as previously, or actually currently written in the Palmdale Municipal Code. We charge these fees and we have to deal with new applications frequently, and so that revenue will no longer be coming in because we, there wouldn't pass those charges on to the applicants and the developers, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for doing this because a, as a homeowner, I know sometimes it's not just the permits and the fire department, sometimes it's just hard to get a construction company out there to get things done within a certain amount of time. So, on behalf of the residents that are remodeling or trying to upgrade their home, this is a huge benefit for them and, and it will help them financially and take off some of the stress that the whole process is. So thank you for doing that.
And, and I would like to reiterate that that's part of what we're doing going through our, our policies, um, expirations, updating our, our webpage, um, creating videos, not, you know, people tend to learn better with videos. I am a visual learner myself, so we're, we're, we're doing all of this to make it easier. Um, we're going through all of the old policies and asking why. Uh, does it still make sense?
Thank you.
What was this for? Is it something we still need? So, with, uh, help of management and, and council, we'll do what we can to get out of the way.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you as well for revising. I know since I've been on council, snow load and, and the weight per square, square foot has always been an issue, but I know we have to update this every few years. This is Title 24 through the state of California, so there are some regulations in here that are a little unfriendly, I guess you could say. Does this include the, uh, the electrification of, of everything moving forward? So like, no more, no more gas appliances? Moving forward, once this takes effect for, for home builders, if they were to build a new, a new home, I, I read that it, it makes them have a solar system, a battery backup, uh, heat pumps, electric stove.
It's definitely to their, it's definitely to their benefit, yeah. So, solar, solar is required. It's been required, uh, six, 2016 code cycle. Batteries are not required, but again, with the tier ratings and the adjustments that SC has made, um, I believe, if I don't get this wrong, it was April 15th of '22, the tier system changed and you no longer got paid as much for what you produced, which then took the ROI, the return on investment to your solar system, kind of to, to flatline. So batteries became not mandatory, but wise. So they just integrated it as part of the system because it, it, it's what ends up getting you your return. You can store that power and then you can use it during peak hours when you, when you normally wouldn't, uh, when you wouldn't get as much for your, for your power. So batteries not necessarily required, uh, I don't know why you wouldn't do it.
Yeah. And that's kind of what a lot of the reports are saying. It's not required, but these are, these are upfront costs that are unfortunately going to make construction a little bit, little bit, the new homes and the new, new builds are a little bit more expensive, but it's going to be better in the long term, so to speak. And, and I just want everyone to know that, that some of these codes and some of the things that we're approving tonight are, our hands are tied. The, the state of California is making us do this or required to do this for, for fire, for earthquake, and, uh, and for energy savings costs. So overall good, but overall, there are some changes that make it a little bit more difficult, but that's, that's the state of California making us do what we got to do, right?
That's, that's it. We try to keep up.
Okay.
And does this, does this affect the gas stoves?
Uh, yeah, you, the electrif, the electrification, yeah. If you, if you currently have one, you don't have to-
Right.
-get rid of it.
Because I love my gas stove, so.
I'm, I'm with you. I, I'm with you.
But new, new construction and new homes and new apartments and all that, it will be all electric.
Correct.
Okay.
It just, it, it's, it's, it make, it just, it pencils out.
It does. And the one, the one thing I'm worried about is if the grid can sustain that. If everyone's using electric stoves, electric water heaters, charging their cars, can, can the grid truly support that? I always thought our infrastructure needed a healthy mix of everything, but I know that, that the state has been working on this for many, many years, uh, to electrify everything, so to speak, and get away from natural gas.
Yeah, some of the significant code changes have to do with electric vehicle chargers, uh, the storage of batteries and mounting batteries, the spacing between them, uh, for fire concerns and things like that. So there's, there's a significant amount of, of, uh, attention given to things like storage of energy and electric vehicle chargers and, and things like that. So, um, like I say, it, it's, it's, we have to try and keep up. It's, it seems like it's monthly.
Yeah, it is.
But we do, we do our best and we'll, we'll continue.
So, um, I think the public probably isn't aware as much, uh, about the importance of the permitting process and then the follow-up inspections. And, um, because these structures have to be safe. We live in earthquake country, we live in fire country as well. And so, uh, the policies of the City of Palmdale, along with every other city in California, are required to have the strictest, highest quality standards for the safety of their homes, for our offices, for our industrial buildings, for everything, uh, where people meet and interact. And, and, and this is part of the process. And, uh, I know that sometimes we're overburdened with, uh, regulations and new laws and all kinds of things and, and sometimes it doesn't really make a lot of sense. But in this particular area, it's important for the public to understand and it's important for policymakers to make policy that's going to keep the public safe. And, and I appreciate what you do and all of your staff, uh, regarding that, because I think we have a very high-quality team in, in, uh, building and safety and in the permitting process. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I owe it all to my staff. My staff's a great staff, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we can go ahead and call for the vote. I'm sorry, vote question.
Okay, sorry.
I'm really off my game today.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number 6.2. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. City clerk, please read the title of the resolution.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an aggregate outstanding principal amount not to exceed 20 million to finance and refinance a 48-unit qualified residential rental project to be located at 38732 Ninth Street East in the City of Palmdale for the benefit of Ninth Street East Housing LP, a California Limited Partnership or another entity to be created by Malair Housing Investments, Inc., and certain other matters relating thereto.
Okay, do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Potem and Council. This item before you this evening is to conduct a public hearing and then adopt the resolution approving the issuance of these revenue bonds by the CMFA in the amount of $20 million. This is required by the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act. This is a Tefra hearing. Um, in order for those bonds to be, to qualify as tax-exempt bonds, uh, we must conduct this public hearing. And the bonds are not an obligation of the city, they are the sole responsibility of the borrower. Um, so there's no obligation to the city whatsoever.
Great, so I just want to be really clear. This is not Palmdale taxpayers' money being spent on this, correct?
That is correct. It is not Palmdale's money.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll go ahead and call for a public testimony on 6.2.
There are pub, no public speaker cards on this item?
Then I'll go ahead and close public testimony. Could I get a motion and a second to adopt resolution CC 2025? Yes. Here's my script.
Okay.
I'll, I'll share it with you. Do I have a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
I'll second. Call for, we can do a voice vote?
No, go ahead and put the motion in.
Did somebody move yet? I'll second it. I do have a couple of questions.
We have a first and a second?
Okay. So let's go ahead and call. Oh, you have questions?
Yeah, just a couple. And I know that we have to do this according to the process of the state and, and whatever, but the, um, $20 million in bonds, and then we're going to have another one just like it in a couple of minutes, right?
We are, that one is for a separate project, but yes.
Right. So, uh, in the event that for some reason, there's an economy downturn, things turn sour, these things can't be, um, maintained and, and the project fails, uh, it's the borrower, that's the developer, I assume, uh, is responsible for that.
That is correct.
And the recourse then would be a foreclosure process, I assume, and, uh, that would be entirely on the borrower, the developer, the city has no risk whatsoever on this.
That is correct.
Okay. And, um, they can never come back to the city and say, hell, you passed it through, therefore you have to be responsible.
No, they cannot.
Are you, Ms. Happen, are you, uh, aware of any litigation where, uh, any developer comes back and says, we're going to include you either in a bankruptcy process or, or hold us responsible in some, or any city or municipality that passes these through?
No, I am not. Um, and I think the process for this, it's just, it comes out of state law, so City Council has to approve it, but again, it's issued by a completely different entity and it goes through that entity. Has nothing to do with the city, however, Council has to approve the issuance of the bonds.
So basically, we're holding the hearing for them because the project is in our jurisdiction. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Very good. I'm, I'm good with that.
Anybody else? No? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes. Moving on to... Item 6.3. No? Are we moving on to item seven?
No, we're moving to 6.3.
Good. I'm trying to find 6.3 in my agenda here. It goes 6.2. Okay, so... Oh, it's stapled, sorry, my bad. Let me, let me un-staple it. Found it. 6.3. Another hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. City clerk, could you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the issuance of the California Municipal Finance Authority exempt facility bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 60 million for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of Zenith on 25th, located at 25th Street East and East Avenue Q in Palmdale, and certain other matters related thereto.
All right, can I have staff please provide a report?
Good evening, again. Uh, this item, similar to the last one, is a requirement of the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act. We are, uh, required to conduct this public hearing and then asking the council to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of $60 million in bonds from the CMFA for this project located at 25th Street East and, um, East Avenue Q. And this is for the construction of 272 units of housing at that location. Again, not a obligation or responsibility of the city whatsoever.
All right. We'll go ahead and call for public testimony on this item?
There are no public, um, speaker cards on this item.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comments on 6.3. And if I could please get a motion or a second to adopt the resolution?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second?
Nope. Well, okay.
It's finicky.
What's that?
It's finicky, pressing those buttons.
I think it's better if you just move, second.
Wasn't fast enough.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, now we're moving on to item number seven. Appointment. Now is the time for public participation on the appointment and new business section. You will be allowed two minutes for appointment and new business. So I will call for public comments on appointments and new business. So that'd be 7.1.
There are no public comments on that section.
Not agenda?
There are no public comments?
7.1?
Yes. Yeah, I, actually, I'd just like to get a little bit of clarification. Is this the, the committee to do the search for the new city manager position?
Yes.
And is there going to be anybody but the two council members, or?
No.
And how long are we talking about this search going on?
I don't know how long it's going to be until it's resolved, I would assume, and the, the council people that I have selected for that is myself and Austin Bishop.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't know if anyone else wants to.
Yeah, we have a staff report on this item-
Oh, sorry.
-for 7.1. When you're ready.
Yep, we're ready.
Good evening, Mayor Potem and Council. Uh, this item, um, at the October 7th meeting, the council had directed staff to initiate a recruitment for the position of city manager. What we're asking in this item is that the council appoint two members to an ad hoc subcommittee that would help to guide staff in that recruitment process. So those two members would help to identify the process and method by which that, uh, recruitment would be conducted.
Okay. And there's, there's no time limit on that?
There is not.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, the search is actually going to be conducted by staff, right? So that, interacting with the-
The subcommittee would provide that direction to staff.
Direction to staff, but the staff is actually going to contract with whatever, um, headhunters there are out there, whoever does this kind of work, uh, aside from, of course, Mr. Mendez, but, uh, but he's right here. We don't have to hunt too far right there.
Staff would take the direction based on those two subcommittee members and execute accordingly.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions? All right. Thank you very much.
You look puzzled, Eric.
So could I get a motion and a second to agreeing to the appointment of myself and Austin Bishop for this committee?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
A second, thank you very much. Oh, he wants you.
Oh. What do you want to do?
So we do, we do have a motion and a second? We're good? Okay, so the motion passes. Congratulations, Austin. Hope you can, we can be a team.
Let's make it happen.
Let's make it happen, let's make it right. All right, Mayor Potem, let's call for a vote, we did that. Now we are on item number eight, 8.1, new business. Could I get a staff report? Hi, Sophia.
Mayor Potem and Council, Sophia Reyes, Director of Housing. Um, the item before you is we are requesting receive public testimony, testimony regarding ordinance number 1662, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale repealing and reenacting Chapter 544 of the Palmdale Municipal Code relating to mobile home space rent control. This item is, um, proposing to strengthen and clarify our mobile home rent control regulations. And the changes include updates of the department definitions, revisions throughout the ordinance, um, such as updating the department. So it's generic. As we've had changes in the organization, it would require changes every time we change the organization, department names, to, um, have an update. So we're making it generic to department. Our, to be consistent with positions as manager, as opposed to manager with the department name attached, um, so there's more consistency. Changes in the nomination procedure, so it's consistent with Section 208030 of the Palmdale Municipal Code. Update a quorum to be three members instead of four members, and to be consistent with the Civil Code. Staff's available for questions.
Okay. Um, city clerk, could you please read the title of the ordinance?
So, um, Ms. Reyes has read the title-
Okay.
-into the record.
Could I hear the motion and a second to adopt?
Receive public testimony?
To introduce?
The one introducing?
Because you don't have call for public testimony till way at the bottom.
Well, the reason, public testimony has already taken place on the appointment and the, and the new business section.
Okay, so no more public testimony?
No.
Okay. All right. Council discussion.
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
I have a question. How many mobile homes does this, parks does this affect?
There are seven privately on.
Seven, okay, that's a lot. All right, I was just curious, thank you very much. If there's no more council discussion, we will call for the vote.
I'm going to go ahead and introduce and adopt at the same time on this vote?
Thank you.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Okay, good, thank you. That was quick. So let's move on to item number nine, city manager's report.
Mayor Potem, members of the council. We're in our final two weeks of our, uh, farmers' markets, so join us at Oasis Park these next two Fridays. It's before the end of the season, this will be our last two farmers' markets. Also, uh, the Neighborhood Improvement Program Project Series starts on Saturday, October 25th, from 7:30 to 1:00 p.m. Come out and let's help beautify our community. It'll be sponsored through Waste Management, and they'll be out here supporting us, so Saturday, October 25th. Also, join us for Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk on Saturday, October 25th at the Palmdale Amphitheater. Check-in begins at 8:00 and the walk promptly starts at 9:00. SAVES, in collaboration with committee partners, will be hosting a drive-through Halloween costume distribution for their clients. Free costumes will be available for youth under the age of 18, uh, while supplies last, so that's, that'll be a big one. Join us on October 31st at 6:00 p.m. at the Palmdale Playhouse for Halloween with Houdini, a captivating one-man show that brings a legendary escape artist to life through astonishing feats, magic, and his rise to fame. Celebrate Dia de los Muertos on November 2nd at 4:00 p.m. at the Palmdale Playhouse with live music by Mariachi Raíces de México, traditional dance, and heartfelt tributes honoring loved ones who came before us. Join us for ILEAD Youth Conference dedicated to empowering and supporting youth people ages 12 to 17. The event will take place on Friday, November 7th from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30 at Legacy Commons. Explore valuable resources for lo, from local nonprofits and community organizations and participate in intera, interactive breakout sessions designed to inspire and up, uplifts our youth. And I have one more item that's fresh off the presses here. If you guys saw during the communications brief, one of the hottest topics of the year was the Dodger Watch Party that we had last year. That was very well-received by the community and, you know, Dodgers made the World Series this year and we're going to be doing the same thing, but we're only going to be doing it Palmdale-style, which is bigger and better. We are going to be partnering with the Holiday Inn and, um, we'll have our watch party there at the Holiday Inn. Join us to cheer our favorite team, enjoy food, drink specials, fun, raffles, and lively atmosphere for baseball fans of all ages. It's going to be at the Holiday Inn on Palmdale, on, uh, Palmdale, on Fifth Street. It's going to be at the Holiday Inn on Palmdale, on Fifth Street. 5:00 p.m., the first 50 guests to arrive will receive complimentary appetizer and non-alcoholic beverage. Raffle tickets include 2026 Drytown Water Park tickets, 2026 Palmdale Amphitheater concert tickets, 2026 High Desert Beer and Wine Festival tickets, and complimentary stay at the Holiday Inn, and much more. So join us, we'll be having more social media posts on this. This will be exciting and hopefully well-received as it was last year. And thank you to our partners from, what is it? From, our, Visit Palmdale. Sorry about that, but Visit Palmdale.
Is there any cost to that event?
The event is free.
Event is free, just buy your own food and drink when you get there.
Correct, unless you're the fifth, first 50 people.
Unless you're first 50, okay.
Is it going to be one night only, or what?
Every, every game night.
Every home game?
Yes.
Or every game?
Every game.
Every game?
Every game.
Excellent, sounds like fun. Thank you, sir.
Oh, Dodgers.
Every game until the Dodgers win.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number 10, is the sheriff still here? I think they left, so I guess we're not going to do a sheriff's report tonight. Huh? Yeah? Sarah, you can do the sheriff's report? I see you coming. Oh, is there, are they outside?
She's going to peek.
He's gone? Okay, we'll make him do it next time. I think she says he's gone. We'll give her a second. She'll go drag him out of the parking lot. If he's there.
I got to say, the street sign is much bigger when you have it in person.
It's way bigger than I thought.
They look really small and they hang from the streetlights, and it's really heavy, too.
It's huge, it's gigantic, so yeah.
That's the actual sign from that hangs off of a traffic signal.
Yeah, it hangs off of a signal, yeah. I didn't realize they were that big. It is.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Oh, she found him, told you she'd drag him in. Good job, Sarah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The LASD is a big family, and we have to take care of our Mrs. Klinkenbumer, so. Good evening, Council. I'm going to do my monthly report. For the month of September, our average response time to routine calls was 118 minutes. We're currently at 87 minutes for the month of October, though, so we're definitely seeing some traction. I believe it's because of Virtual Deputy. We're also, we just launched Spanish-speaking Virtual Deputy today, so it's on the website. Anyone goes on there, we have a Spanish-speaking Virtual Deputy as well. Month of September, we handled 3,733 calls for service. Calls for service are down, a little bit across the board, I believe. We continued our partnership with the city's public safety staff. The CSOs handled 383 incidents, which has been up, as well as 246 reports, which is also up. The city-funded special assignment team made 69 arrests in the month of September, and they helped city code enforcement out with 21 operations. Based on preliminary data, we're averaging 315 Part I crimes per month. It's been going up a little bit, but we're still underpace from last year. We're down 4% compared to last year so far. We're 107 less reported crimes than the year before. We're up a little bit in burglaries, residential burglaries and commercial burglaries, as well as stolen vehicles. We've got a couple planned operations coming up to combat some of those crimes. Violent crime is down 13%, particularly gang shootings are down 43% compared to last year, and down 57% compared to two years ago. So gang shootings are definitely down. Month of September, we made 316 arrests, we recovered 38 firearms. Graffiti, 14 arrests, as well as another 27 investigations into graffiti. And then traffic collisions are slightly down from last year. We're at 1,520. Fatal collisions are still up, up 36% at 15, but if I could note, in May of this year, we were at 12. So the trend has definitely started to go down. I'm hoping that we hopefully end up less than last year or even. Speeding at late hours has been a common trend. We're doing some operations at night that are funded by the city with our motors to do traffic enforcement. We're also looking to shift some resources to a dedicated traffic unit on PM shift to do some more traffic enforcement. A lot of the crashes are happening at night, so we've got to enforce the law when it's happening. Citations are down, like we said before, for the fires, as well as a couple of our folks who are off on leave that do the motor deputies. But we have 6,278 traffic citations through the month of September, so still a good amount. The traffic enforcement index for us is about 10 to 1, which means 10 citations for every one collision. Pretty good, the national average is 20 to 1, with the amount of traffic collisions that are reported here, it's hard to get to there. Aside from that, on this report, we had the Haunted Jail event this last weekend. I believe it was very well-attended. I appreciate the city helping us and sponsoring it and helping us fund it. I want to say we had roughly 10,000 people over two days. A lot of good folks out there. We also had our Faith in Blue event a couple days prior. Had a lot of the different faith-based communities out there over here at Legacy Commons. I want to say we had about 150 to 200 people there, trying to build that up. And lastly, just again, reiterate what I said earlier, I really appreciate everything you've done for us when it came to Deputy Klinkenbumer, everything from the signage, the day of the memorial on the street to honor him, as well as the renaming and everything you continue to do for us. It shows all the deputies here the support, and you can see it in their faces, as well as Kim as well. So I'll leave it at that, so I appreciate it very much. Any questions?
I just want to say that taking 38 guns off the street is an amazing achievement. That's more than one gun a day out of somebody's hands, which keeps our community so much safer, and I hope that that trend continues until we get all the guns off the street that shouldn't be there. I mean, I believe in guns, I, you know, legal guns is good, registered guns, owners having guns, but crooks having guns is not good, so thank you for doing that. My five-year-old grandson did attend the jail. He loved it, he wasn't too scared, so he wants to go next year, he's waiting for that. And I do want to apologize on behalf of the entire council that we did not attend the Faith in Blue because we were at a conference in Long Beach and couldn't make it, so our hearts were there with you, but we were out of town, so I do apologize for that.
Thank you, understandable.
Yes. Captain, hello again. I don't know if I missed it, but yesterday at NCTC, you mentioned DUIs were up?
Yes.
And significantly up, and...
DUI-related collisions were up, but also the arrests. We were up 80 more arrests than last year on DUI arrests. It could either be, A, people are driving drunk more often, or B, we're recognizing the signs and symptoms better. We also have a training officer, a two-man car, that is doing the DUI enforcement on early mornings, so they're out there trying to find people every day that are driving drunk.
And these are just sheriff statistics?
Yes.
Aside from that, there's also CHP?
Yes.
That also, I think, had an increase?
I believe so, yes.
In DUIs as well. So that's a significant problem, and maybe it is because there's better recognition of the symptoms and the characteristics of a DUI driver.
Yes.
So that's very important for our safety. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And it was a great haunted jail, by the way.
Thank you.
I'd been in there before, not as a custody, but to visit clients and so on, but I had never seen it from that perspective, very interesting.
Thank you. I plan on bringing some of the people who helped us put it together, to hopefully honor them here at the city council. It's the second year doing it. I'm telling all my folks that it's going to be our Super Bowl every year, and try to make it bigger and better every year. It's a free community event. There's a lot of people out there, it felt so good just being on that street, and peaceful, felt safe, everyone's hanging out, kids are out there in their costumes, it was a great event.
It really was.
Thank you.
Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, likewise, I attended the Haunted Jail. Kudos on your entire department and all the volunteers that made it happen. I know it's a lot of setup, they got to do it all in one or two days because it is an active, working jail.
Real jail.
So, but to what we were talking about earlier of civic engagement and getting the public to engage, I think that's an excellent way what you have done as far as getting people to the Sheriff's Department. And I noticed when we were waiting in line, there was a QR code for a survey, so did you get a handful of people that took the survey? I know I did.
Yeah, we did, we ended up getting about 30 entries that day. I thought I would have gotten thousands.
30 out of 10,000?
One thing I did find out is that, and for the folks listening, it says patrol station on there right now, that's what you click first. So they basically took our old survey and made it department-wide. So now you got to get through a couple little sifters to get to where you want to do Palmdale's entries, right? So Palmdale's a patrol station, we're going to probably change the language to like your local sheriff station, so that way it's not as confusing, because folks in line were pushing custody facility, and then they don't see Palmdale.
Hmm.
Unfortunately. Yeah, we got some more last night, too, at one of our events, so slowly but surely, the input is very appreciative and it's valuable to us.
It is, and even though the responses are low, I always look at it like, well, if 10 or 20 or 30 people feel this way, you can think that 300 or 3,000 people feel this way, but that's kind of what we deal with in civic engagement, is that 10,000 people show up for the event, and 30 people fill out the questionnaire or the survey, but I'm glad we're doing it, I'm glad that you're opening the door to the public and showing them a different side of the Sheriff's Department. So kudos to you and everyone that helped put that together.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
I got one more thing I forgot.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So this is for Mayor Protem Bettencourt, from the LA County Sheriff's Department, Contract City Council Academy. Certifies Laura Bettencourt has successfully completed the 2025 Contract City Council Academy. The Sheriff's Department thanks you for your participation. Signed by the Sheriff, Robert Luna, as well as the Captain of Contract Law, Andrew Cruz, dated the 20th of August, 2025.
Thank you very much. It was a great experience.
Almost forgot.
Does she get a badge for that?
That was a total surprise to me. Kind of caught me off guard.
Good job.
Thanks. Okay, did that? Madam Clerk, should we do the non-agendized public comments first, or do we do the council report announcements and requests for future agenda items?
The non-agenda public comments.
Okay, so let's go ahead and call now for public comments on non-agendized items only. Do we have any speaker cards?
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Hi, Eugene.
Hi, how are you? Thank you very much. Eugene Hernandez, Annalou Valley, Green Party. First of all, I'd just say regarding Hispanic Month, that it's not very well-known that Chicanos earned the largest amount of Congressional Medals of Honor in the history of the United States. As a matter of fact, one Chicano guy, Gabaldón, who was raised in East LA, was able to, he spoke Japanese, he was able to get 2,000 Japanese soldiers to surrender in World War II. And Hollywood made a movie about him, but of course, they put him as a white guy. So that's part of our history, and I welcome Salva for introducing those dancers. And I also have to say that I'm very disappointed with County Supervisor Barger for opposing the motion on behalf of the immigrants. I think that groups like Salva do a tremendous job in our community. You know, they're law-abiding, they're hardworking, they have food distribution, and they do other services. Why can't our supervisor honor that? On another point, at the last meeting, I reviewed the footage, and I'm very disappointed with Meghan Trainor, whatever it is, being the frontman for the group AB Edge, you know? I can't believe that you gave that group $300,000, they wouldn't respond to questions that you put forth, they wouldn't say who were the board of directors, they wouldn't cooperate one bit. If this was a nonprofit agency that did this, they would be immediately cut from city funds. But why are you letting this group of wealthy white men, $300,000 of our taxpayer money, and they won't reveal anything they do? I looked them up on the computer, I get no answers to what AB Edge says. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eugene. Next speaker?
We have Yugo Vargas.
Hello, Laura, I appreciate it again for your town hall meeting, and I harassed you about the Barrel Springs.
I'm going to meet with you, I really am.
I left you a message with your secretary, too.
I got it, I did, I got it.
And I'm going to get more attention from you with my theatrics.
Okay.
This is a turtle. This is a turtle.
Oh.
Right here from Palmdale, generations of turtles, they've been there in this Barrel Spring pond, there's two ponds there, actually, there were three. And this gentleman who bought it about eight months ago killed a pond, and has over 38 18-wheelers in there. We have all this desert, they could have made it in truck stop. They picked this one for a very, for a song, very cheap price of $450. I was willing to come up with $950, somehow I didn't find out until too late. There's over 38 18-wheeler trucks there, and they bring them, and dead of night, they park them there. There was one spring was still coming in, he killed it. In 1964, there were always five springs, barrel springs, four of them ended up in the aqueduct, but one was still feeding it, and we had these beautiful ponds, every night we had the frogs, there were squirrels coming, deer, we had crane coming there, we had all the owls and pigeons, name it. And this killing the two ponds right now is dry, and my dogs found the carcasses of these turtles they're bringing. It's a very, very sad situation. As a proud Palmdalian, I'm begging you, please take care of it, restore those two ponds, and if you can, just get them out of there and restore that. One more thing, Eric, I never called Mr. Obama city, what city? Garden Boy or... I never called him names like that. After I left, I have you in video, you say that we called him Obama.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
We have Mark Maldonado.
Mayor Protem Bettencourt and the City Council, on August 19th, during your tirade against Palmdale Freedom Coalition, Mr. Olson, you said, quote, "You come in here week after week to play political theater because one of you wants to be mayor of Lancaster." I assume that you were speaking of me, since I ran for mayor. Well, Mr. Olson, how dare you attack me because I ran for mayor of Lancaster? What does that have to do with anything that happens there here in Palmdale? I am the leader of the Lancaster Freedom Coalition. I support the work of PFC and believe we should speak out when politicians like you spew hatred, lies, and misinformation. The impact of your tirade is not going to go away. You don't care about the people of color, you care about yourself. I am a person of color. A lot of people in PFC and LFC are people of color. You, where your concern, where's your concern for them? Do you only care about people of color when they agree with you politically? Why haven't you addressed, ever addressed, their concerns? Instead of helping them, you attack them. I do not understand why you would think my participation in Palmdale City's council meetings has anything to do with me running for mayor of Lancaster. Why would you bring that up? What possible connection is there between the two? While I think it could be that you received money from Rex Paris for your campaign, you continue to back Rex Paris, you vote to give him $10 million of taxpayer money for a center that ultimately will not benefit the taxpayers of Palmdale. I believe your attack of me is in support of Rex Paris and has nothing to do with you trying to do what is right for the citizens of Palmdale and the district you represent. I believe it's important to fight for what is right for all citizens of the Antelope Valley, to fight to make sure all people, regardless of color, are heard and supported by their local government. I also believe it is important for council members to do their utmost to bring the community together. You, Mr. Olson, are a divider and use of race when it fits your purpose.
Mr. Maldonado, your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
I would like to call several individuals to line up at the podium. Mickey Martinez, Jasper, Roger Sodestat, Michael Ross, Denise.
This just helps to expedite the movement of the speakers, so.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Mickey Martinez, and I have been a resident of the City of Palmdale since I was nine years old. I currently teach in the neighboring city of Lancaster, California, and I'm also a proud member of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition, a group of residents who care deeply about this city and work hard to stand for freedom, transparency, and fairness in our local government. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply disappointed and concerned by Councilmember Eric Olson's defamatory and ignorant comments. defamatory and ignorant comments about our group. The PFC is made up of parents, teachers, business owners, and neighbors. Everyday people who volunteer their time to protect our community and hold leaders accountable. To label or insult citizens who care about their city is not only irresponsible, but it's dangerous. As a teacher, I teach my students the importance of respect, even when we disagree, words have power. And when an elected official uses their platform to publicly insult or demean a group of citizens, it doesn't just create division, it puts a target on our backs. We've already seen the consequences when leaders use reckless language. The Mayor of Lancaster posted online calling PFC domestic terrorists, which made people more divided and even more angry at our group. Take, for instance, the woman who spawned in like the main character of the meeting last time, just to speak out about our group, with nothing of intelligence or substance to say about PFC, but had to make sure to say something. Why? Because we're going to meetings with facts after doing our homework and speaking using intelligent language. And of course, we all know what happened to Charlie Kirk, who rose to fame as a great example of doing your own research, standing firm with your beliefs, and using your voice. That's exactly what we PFC members do. And we research and use our words to hold people like you, you're not even looking at me, accountable. We cannot allow you, Mr. Olson, to perpetuate the same dangerous pattern through race baiting. The city deserves leadership that brings people together, not tears them apart. We may disagree on policies, but that should never lead to name-calling or labeling residents in a hateful or misleading way. We are not extremists.
Ma'am, your time is up.
We are parents, workers, teachers, and neighbors who care about the place we call home. So tonight, I'm asking for accountability and respect.
This will be your first warning.
And asking that Councilmember Olson publicly retract and apologize for his comments. Let's set an example for our children and our community and our city that we can disagree without dissenting.
Mr. Sodestat, Mr. Sodestat.
That we can stand firm without tearing down.
Please come forward, thank you.
And that freedom and stability.
Please come forward to the podium, thank you.
No clapping, remember the rules.
Wow, a lot of important issues been discussed here this evening.
You can raise that up to make it a little easier to talk, if you want. Could you restart his time after he gets it up? Thanks.
That's the slowest elevator ever.
I know.
However, I believe my issue is of overwhelming importance. We're missing a trash can at Arnie Quinones Park. Now, there used to be two cans, now there is only one. And a lot of people use this park, and a lot of them put the dog poop bags in there. Now they have to walk back and forth across the park. We've had discussions with several of the members of the city staff, but there's still only one trash can.
All right. This is the first I've heard of this, so.
I hope you'll be able to fix this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah, hi, Michael Ross. I'd like to get a copy, if we can get a copy, of where these rules for how we run these meetings are conducted. The preamble to the Brown Act says this, the preamble to California Ralph M. Brown Act states that the public sovereignty is not yielded to government agencies, and that the public insists on remaining informed to retain control over the instruments they have created. The Act's preamble emphasizes that public agencies exist to conduct the people's business, and the public has the right to be informed and participate in the decision-making process of their local legislative body. The key principles of the preamble are public sovereignty, the people do not give up their sovereignty to the public servants who serve them. Right to know, public servants do not have the right to decide what the public should or should not know. Public control, the public insists on remaining informed to retain control over the government bodies they have created. Conduct of public business, public commissions, boards, councils, and other legislative bodies exist to conduct the people's business. You know, we didn't know it was going to be cut down to two minutes, we're coming in thinking it's the normal three. It seems like things are lopsided here, guys. I mean, you guys, I'm not saying you work for us, not at all, I'm saying we work together, and we are sovereign, and we have the right to conduct the business as we see fit. So I want to know, I want the rules so we can run it by our own council, because I think it's kind of lopsided. And since I have twenty seconds, I'm going to end on a good note. Kaleidoscope was great, I'm very happy about Bettencourt and Austin being the subcommittee, I think you'd do a fine job. When we talked before, back in the day, you were one of the one people that really actually vetted people out, so I'm really happy to see that happen. But I really would like to get a copy of that, and you do a fantastic job.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, and I will have our city attorney get something together for you.
Hi, I'm Denise Lotanzy, I'm here tonight with Desert Democracy Project, I have spawned again. The reason why I came tonight is because I posted my vision of the last city council meeting, which obviously wasn't very positive. And I was contacted by a member of the community here whose child goes to the Palmdale Aerospace Academy, who told me that they were here last April for a meeting when their child was assigned an essay, and the essay was on city government. They left after two hours because they didn't feel safe here in the council chambers because of the zoo that this meeting often is. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are enforcing rules. It was also commented when I came down here that I was allowed to speak on this side of the council curtain. I'd like to point out that the Ralph M. Brown Act, same one mentioned, gives me the right to public participation in all bodies, no matter where I am inside the state of California. So I have the absolute right to come here and speak. I will continue to encourage people to come to the Palmdale City Council and speak. I have tried to encourage my friend, whose child goes to the Palmdale Aerospace Academy, to come here, but she does not feel safe in these council walls, and hopefully you guys are on the way to changing that, because, you know, when you let in a circus, sometimes you get clowns. So, thank you very much for letting me come tonight.
Thank you.
So it might surprise some of you to find that Councilman Olson and I had a phone conversation yesterday, wherein he was trying to get across to me the idea that we need to stop feuding and instead focus on what's good for the city. I couldn't agree more. The only difference of opinion here is that what I think is best for the city is that he not serve on this council any longer. He's been calling us things, he didn't use the racist word in his tirade, but he said things that were only, could only be construed as those people are racist. There's no other way it could have been taken. Then he said, "I didn't call anybody racist." That was the argument going on last week, he didn't call us racist. But today, or pardon me, yesterday, he calls me to tell me that he had sent a video to Rex Paris that was a comedy, an AI-generated comedy, that basically resulted in calling the Palmdale Freedom Coalition racists. I want to know what kind of judgment, especially in light of his recent tirade against us, that he's trying to tell us wasn't what we say it is, what kind of judgment says it's a good idea to send that to Rex Paris? And the reason he called me was because apparently Mr. Paris posted it online and said it was from his good friend Eric Olson. Eric then tells me, "Well, he's not my good friend." Really? Why are you sending jokes to him about Palmdale Freedom Coalition if he's not your friend? I'm tired of the lies, you can't speak out of both sides of your mouth. We're sick of it, we're tired of being defamed, you are not fit to sit on this council. Mr. Bishop, it's really rich to me that you would presume to chastise the public about their behavior without mentioning his egregious behavior. Not one word. You guys constantly tell us what the rules are for the public, but I don't see any rules for you. What the heck is that? You are not somebody who is elected to serve as our brains, you're supposed to amplify people's voices and not chastise us. We are not going to sit back and let an elected representative defame us. It won't happen. Every time that happens, we will push back, and you might want to read Coingvee, California, nineteen seventy-one, before you presume to tell us what we say and how we say it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
No further speaker cards on this section.
I think Marcia's coming in. Good evening, Marcia.
Good evening. Thank you for the reminder about the breast cancer walk this Saturday, actually, signings started at eight.
My apologies.
And the walk starts at nine. Please remember that those of us that have breast cancer, my sister has been with me from day one. The minute I found out, I called her. So for twenty-one years, she's been by my side, appointments, surgeries. So caregivers, please, please encourage them to attend the walk also. Some are not so fortunate to have someone to walk with, you know, but it's, we must bring to light, you know, the fight against breast cancer. The Spanish on the screen is very cool, except for it's coming up from the bottom, and I can't, people have heads, you know, little heads, and we cannot see it, because it's coming up from the bottom. So maybe we can start at midway or something, so it's a good deal, but only if we can read it. Okay? Also, sidewalks are my thing, we're getting new sidewalks. I went on the website, trying to find out when my area was going to get a sidewalk, or I tried every kind of button and everything to find out, you know, what the deal is. So if someone, I use the back of a speaker for him, I'm gonna turn in, if they could let me know, at least I want to know when my area is going to get a new sidewalk.
Okay.
Mike, I was also very surprised to see the two minutes, the two minutes up there for the, for the, and the combined appointments and new business, in two minutes. Plus you, so you have the new appointments that you talked about, asked for public comment, and then you gave the new business what was going on, but yet we were supposed to have already talked about it with the two minutes in the beginning, and where in the heck was the two minutes come from? Eric wanted three minutes for everything, y'all voted three minutes for everything. A little bit of hot fire going on here.
I'll see you on Saturday.
Okay, see ya. I got the scooter.
And Mr. City Manager, in the past, the previous city manager, I had asked that we post somewhere on our website upcoming repairs for streets, street paving, and improvements. If that's available, could we post it on our city website? Thank you. Okay. All right, we're going to head to closing public comments on non-agendized items, and we're going to move into council reports, announcements, and requests for future agenda items. Who would like to begin? You're good? Anyone?
Oh, I just, I want to say kudos to the Parks and Rec Department for the Kaleidoscope Festival, that was, that was truly amazing. That is an event that just gets better and better and better. The weather was amazing, the drone show was fantastic, it had pyrotechnics on it, it really was, it really was truly special for our community, and it's just great, it's something that, that, that vendors and artists and, and people can come together, and it's free to attend, it's free parking, so thank you Parks and Rec Department, thank you staff for putting that together. I always have a great time attending it, and it's just, it's great to be able to be a part of something where you can give something back to the community at the end of the year, it's something I look forward to. And to address my statement that I made earlier in the night, that wasn't made to be, to divide anyone, I just wanted to set the tone for the meeting, that we can all do better as a group. And that was even directed at us as a council, we can all do better to show each other respect and dignity, and I know we're not going to get along, I know we all have different views based on our own experiences and, and what we experience in our own neighborhoods and our own residents that have issues with the, with the concerns in our neighborhoods, so we all have different views and perspectives, but my only intention was to say what I said at the beginning of the meeting was to help find some neutral ground and to help bring people together. I wasn't trying to divide anybody or, or start any, any animosity with the PFC. I hope, I hope you guys know that, it wasn't directed at you guys, it was a general statement to all of us in our community that we need to rise above and do better for our valley. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And that was the same reason that I called Mr. Gallego yesterday, because in that morning, three members of the PFC came and hung up signs all over City Hall, asking for me to resign, see your way out, Eric Olson must resign, and that was a violation of several municipal code, and, you know, they could be charged for that, and I said, "I don't want that," right? I want to find a way to de-escalate, because when you do things like that, you're wasting city resources, our maintenance team had to go out there and take them down, they could have been getting rid of graffiti, or illegal dumping, or beautifying the city, LSD had to look into it, that's a waste of their resources, I don't want that, I want what's best for this city, and that's what the PFC claims they want. So I reached out to say, "I'm not resigning, I'm not going to resign, it's a wasted effort to keep demanding I do it, but I'll answer your phone calls to talk about how we can make this city better." That was why I called him, and he keeps misrepresenting our telephone conversations. He admitted to me that I never said the word racist, yes, I did imply it, I did imply it to the two people that rolled their eyes. And he said, he said that they're kooks, he said specifically Betsy and Carol Ross are kooks, that's what he told me on the phone. And, you know, that, he agreed with my assessment, that I was only talking about the two, and he brought up the fact of the outburst the week before.
No, I'm, I'm, no, see, again.
I'm repeating what Mr. Gallego said to me. I'm repeating what Mr. Gallego said to me, not racist, he said my members are kooks, he specifically cited Betsy, and he said Carol. So he's not telling you the truth of our conversations, because he keeps misclassifying this, he keeps saying that I said racist, that's not what was said, I implied it for the two people.
You can arrest me if you want, but I gave you the quote, and you did call us racist.
Okay, well, the point is, we need to find a way to stop wasting the city's time and city resources on our feud. They're free to put up a candidate against me, you know, that's what elections are for. The original point was, they don't want to hear the opposite point of view, just like when they came and said what they had to say and got up and left before it was my time to speak, and that's the frustration. But, you know, we need to find a way to get past it, we need to find a way to do what's right for the city.
Okay, the last thing I want to say is that, yes, we are tightening the rules for the audience, we have the option to have one minute, two minute, or three minute for speaker time. We didn't pick one, I picked two, except for agenda items, which is three. I'm trying to control this meeting, we're trying to bring it back into normalcy, and not just from the public, but from this dais. We have agreed that the council members themselves will be more professional, more measured in what we say and how we respond to things. We've got to learn as a council to listen, and when we're talking, we're not listening. So our job as councilors to listen to public speak and not respond, and I'm just as guilty, I talked to Marcia back and forth, and I, I'm breaking the rules too, so I have to clean that up. We are professional, in my opinion, the council is held to a higher standard than the general public. We are representatives of the public, and we should always be in best, the best form possible. So I'm making a commitment to the city that I will every day strive to be better, our co-council will no longer argue with the public or argue with ourselves. That should come to a stop.
May I, I will apologize to you, Mr. Ross, I will apologize to you, because although I was, although I was repeating what Mr. Gallego said, I shouldn't have put that in the public sphere like that, I should have just kept that to myself, I do regret saying that, I understand.
Saying that was absolutely, no.
I understand, and I apologize to you for that.
And so I am admonishing this council to really concentrate on your behavior with the public and with each other, we have got to do better. So, you know, starting fresh, starting tonight, turn the page, start over, start fresh, let's learn to get along up here, let's get along with staff, let's get along with the public. And we can still get along and disagree, you're allowed to have opposing opinions, but we don't need to fight about it, we don't need to argue publicly, name-call, disparage people, we've got to do it in a professional way. And that is my hopes for the, the future meetings at this council, is that we will always be on our best behavior, as will the public. So, that's what I wanted to say. With that, anybody else for announcements?
I'm good.
Announcements? You're good? All right, let's go ahead, and now is the time for closed session. Do I have? Do I have a call for public comments on closed session?
There are no public comments on the closed session.
All right, I'll close public comments on closed session. Hang on, I'm trying to find my last page, sorry. Do we have an announcement by the city attorney?
Yes. Hi, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and city council members. Tonight, I have for you, we've got five items. 13.1, 13.2, 13.3, 13.4, and 13.5. And we are ready to go in closed session when you are.
All right, we're ready to go. Let's go ahead and go to closed session. All right, we are back in session after our closed session. Do we have an announcement by the city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And I'll just take these one by one. For 13.1, there was no reportable action.